Okay, planning recovery course, call order, no call. Tracy Munkowski here, Lucy Dilbert here, John Fennell.
Present.
Jonny Brownson present. Rex Simms, Steve Mettall, and Rachel Wissit here. Okay, public hearings, we have none. Um, approval of the agenda.
Make motion to approve the agenda, it's presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Public comments on agenda items. Mario?
Did you work it?
I'm good.
Uh, approval of minutes, we have two sets because we didn't, um, get to the last, to the December 3rd meeting, so December 3rd, 2019, they both went out together. Did everybody have a chance to review those? December 3rd.
I didn't get them. I, maybe they're, are you emailing them?
No, I am.
And before you, you know, which email address, we'll have to straighten that out.
Lucy Lou, 19, at Hafen.
Lucy Lou, 1953.
Uh huh.
At Hafen, all right.
Maybe check your, check your junk hours.
Maybe you're sending me the junk.
Maybe. Maybe just go over. It's not so much. Right.
It's okay.
Okay, we'll go forward with it. Um, so motion for the December 3rd minutes.
Subscribed.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, minutes for January 7th, 2020. Hopefully, everybody get a chance to review those. Good.
Yep.
So many.
Was there a second? Rob? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Uh, communication correspondence workshop, I don't have anything, anybody else have anything? Uh, matters for consideration, old business, master plan, um, just a general discussion. Um, now, John's not here, he had the, um, the Google Doc, um, going, so we're just going to continue that over the next month. And if you haven't had an opportunity to go and give him feedback, um, just continue to do so. And if, you know, yeah, where you have, that's good.
I don't know, sorry, I don't know if it's just my computer, but when I log into it, the pictures like cover the paragraphs and I can't like see behind it. Can we work on reformatting?
Yeah, let me find out on that.
And I can't move the picture because I'm not an editable person on it, but I can't read.
Is it, I haven't been on, is it a copy, is the Google Doc a copy of the map of the, of sections of the master plan?
Yes.
The whole thing, I think.
It is the entire thing? I'll have him put it up there as a PDF because what's probably happened, it's a Word document that's getting translated by Google and that's what's causing those issues.
That would be great.
Okay.
I can only access it in as a doc through, I can't access it through my, uh, village email for some reason.
Okay.
I have to go through my personal.
Lucy, have you been able to access it at all?
Yeah.
And Lucy still isn't giving permission. I think John was gonna work on that, but he has been off a lot, he might.
Okay, I will, we'll take care of that tomorrow, we'll get back to the office.
Is the document that's on there, is that a document that's already been edited by you guys? Or is it just the original?
I'm not sure. I don't know if that's, that's had any added to it.
He was working, I did talk to him last week about it, and he said he was working on some changes. I think he had planned on bringing some in, but I'm not sure where he's at with it.
On the Google Doc, I only see like, um, on the first couple pages, there's some highlighted pieces of dates that are highlighted. And I think, I wanna say page 62, I don't know why it's sticking to my head, but page 62 has some highlights on it.
He said he was updating stats. So.
And then he did the new counts.
He was updating just the new counts and the row counts and though he was.
And the demographic information was updated. He may have just been incorporating those new numbers into the, into the text there.
I think there are numbers in that document. Because it says stuff like, you know, like it's got projections on things, but they go from 2010, not from, you know, 2019 and start with projections.
Those things that you're referring to are, um, things that we've accomplished that he has highlighted in the peach, but there are some yellow highlights.
Peach.
62, like a peachy color.
Are they numbers?
I don't have peach on mine. Really?
See, doesn't it look kinda peachy, the color?
Let me move the attorney.
This is page 62.
Yeah, that's, well, my computer looks yellow.
Okay.
Which does kinda look.
But I got some yellow up at the top, and I think you're right, it's a bit, it's a bit drenched in.
Just gonna open it, look at it, in chair.
Oh, do you want me to send it to you? Actually, Tracy's got it open, can you send it over to Jeff?
I can.
I can, just.
This way.
Yeah, page 46 has like highlighted, yellow highlights.
Yeah, there were no headers, so I wasn't quite positive what was going on there. But I think you're right, that Google kinda heats it and does stuff to it.
I think that's what you're, if you're seeing the photos bouncing around on the page. We'll fix that in the morning and then make sure everyone has a, we'll just, we'll fix it with a PDF and send out a new share to everybody to that. So everyone will get a new, a new email directly to that.
Um, there's no header?
So somebody needs.
That is page 16.
16. Because I just printed out the old, copied off the website.
I sent it to you, but it's.
I figured I could work on from that.
I know, I had a hundred and twenty.
I thought you put it in the morning, got it, like, because.
Is that page 16 on yours?
Like, I can't send it to you?
You might, yes, if he didn't give, you may not be able to share it if he didn't give you permission to share.
Is that what page it said?
He shouldn't have made, he shouldn't have made it that way.
It's very helpful.
So he had to make some pretty big changes to it then.
Yeah.
Because I printed off the original on page 16, does not look anything like page 16 on Tracy's Google Doc.
And that might be the pictures throwing it off too.
Oh, yeah.
The pictures are over.
No.
Overset.
It came, and as soon as I clicked on it, I said, you gotta ask it to be shared.
Oh, yeah.
I know, sorry.
I can't override that, so I'll have to do that in the morning.
I'll have to talk to your boss about that.
We got, we got the same problem here.
That chart table for page 16, I can't even find any, uh, part of the document. It's not even in here.
What's that saying, Rob?
That chart that, that graph that.
Oh.
It's not even in this, uh.
Yeah, it's. Well, that's the population change from 1950 to 2018, so it wouldn't be in the 2015.
That's true.
But wouldn't the previous data be there? Wouldn't it have just added to the chart?
Where's the population section?
This one.
Population change.
That's that one.
That's the same chart?
That's the same chart.
Oh, those are doubled up lines, that's why it's making chunky like it looks like on there. I got you. And this is on page seven, so somehow it ends up all the way in 16.
Right, okay.
He must have done.
Well, hopefully, when we get a chance to review it a little bit in different format, we can.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we're gonna get new emails sent out to everybody with a new share to a readable PDF version of it.
Okay.
We go from there.
And I almost wonder if he has all of the data updated, if he could just print us all a copy.
Sure.
But only if the data's updated, you know what I mean? Because then it's gonna be going back, but if that format is offset and it's just the original verbiage, that might be, I would prefer that personally.
Okay.
Because then I can grab it anytime and read it, whether, you know, in Mountain about or something instead of.
Okay.
On a table.
You know, like I started reading, I had a wrestling.
That's what I'm saying, right.
So much dead time that, you know, I wanna do something useful.
But you don't always have a device with you that it's easy to read, where you can just have a highlighter and pencil and get some work done.
Go on, go to.
There you go.
Okay. So we're, we're staying with master plan though, um, he wanted us to discuss tonight scheduling our public outreach, and he had two different suggestions of formats, and, um, one we did last time for those who were involved, which was, everybody came in and kind of sat at tables and brainstormed, that was one, and then the other, I'll have Jeff decide because we haven't done that one.
Some communities, whether just going through an update where you're not changing every section, basically, you know, blowing it up and starting from scratch, we'll just do a, an open house. Uh, what we've done in Utica, I think we did it with Parks and Rec Plan in, uh, Scentline as well, is just hosted a time during the day. We usually try to do something like afternoon into the early evening, a couple hours, where some people can come in, have some boards up in terms of, uh, the future land use, existing land use, anything that's being proposed in terms of changes. Um, in the case of the different, see, I'm not sure of all the different character areas you guys are looking at, touching on, but say you have three of them, put those goals and objectives up on some boards, on easels, and then be there to answer any questions that anyone would have. And then the other option is then to give people as they're exiting, they wanna have a comment card or a question or suggestion, they can fill that out and turn that in. Um, that can be one form of input. It's probably, it's definitely not as, uh, it's not scripted, it's programmed as having an actual workshop where everyone comes and sits down at the table and you do some type of a tabletop exercise. But I guess what I'd have you guys do is you know what changes or ideas you have since I haven't been with you the last couple months, is which format would fit the amount of information you have to turn out to the community.
I think we're getting more near that point yet, aren't we?
I think it's, I think you do it early so that you get the feedback from the community as what they wanna see. Am I?
I, I would tend to agree, I mean, I think.
So you mean that's first meeting that he's talking about where they come in and make the comments?
Right, so they can say.
It's not playing commission meeting, it's just open house, they come in and look at them, we're not even here.
One of us will be, and then office will be here, Jeff or John would be, somebody comes to.
Generally, a plan or a member from the planning commission, and then if it's during the office hours, it's nice to have someone from the village here, because people will come in and ask questions that are outside of the realm of what we can answer, they might ask a tax question or something, they can be directed as to us having a table, you know, come back during office hours and speak to somebody, and there might be some things that could just take care of right there and answer, answer for people. I think the most important thing is getting the goals and objectives in front of people, that's where people, the public can wrap their heads around, and they see them, they see residential areas and here are our goals, and are there things we should, you know, if you just ask them, are there things we should be adding to this, or things that you think that don't fit this list, and you just kinda take their comments, and ultimately it'll be up to you guys to decide what that, what that final form of that takes place. That can be done in either format. You know, you could, if you bring people in and have enough people to sit down and do the tabletop or workshop, you can, you can, as a staff, work that, with questions, tabulate those questions. But we don't have a lot of, you know, we're not proposing any major changes, I don't think, in terms of zoning or what we're gonna be doing in different areas in the community, so there's not a lot of response, the public is gonna be agreeing with future land use now, it's pretty much gonna look very much the same as what the last one was.
Right.
So really, I think that the details in the, in the plan update, you're gonna find that the minutia, the details is gonna be in the, in the recommendations. And I think one of the things I think what you guys need to go through, if John hasn't gone through that exercise, is look at the goals and objectives that have been set forth, have any of those been met and should come off. You know, are there achievements that have taken place, and what takes their place, or what are the next steps to those elements?
So it's to gather some information for us to come up with a plan, is what you're saying there?
Correct. And it gives, it gives the, it gives the community, obviously, it's, this is a public forum, we'd like to have more people at the meetings giving, but this is an opportunity for the business community, anyone, so there had to be formal notification going out, we posted, um, you know, that there's going to be a, either a, however it's structured, either a special, uh, open house here at the, at the village offices, or potentially a workshop that's conducted prior to a planning commission meeting.
I think ultimately, it's gonna affect your department the most, because we come here once a month regardless, so what do you prefer?
I would say we would prefer whatever, whatever the community feels is the best way to do it.
I'm gonna say.
No, I mean, I, I, I believe a workshop would be the best way to go if we can guarantee participation. I would say, I would recommend, we will do whatever you guys think you're gonna get the most people for. Because ultimately, they both, if no one participates, we gain nothing regardless of the format.
Because even if we do have a workshop and no one participates, we're still going to move forward.
Absolutely.
So.
The public, I mean, but it has to be noted and known that the enabling legislation says you need to engage the community during this process, so we have to have that. We will also, you know, as I mentioned earlier to, to Jonny, with the process, if you recall last time, is once we get to a final draft, you guys will be presenting that to village council, asking for their permission to let it out for that 63-day review period, that becomes, you know, the final document, and at the end of that, there is a formal public hearing that's gonna be held too, so that'll be your second engagement with the community. That will also allow you to solicit input and still make changes to that draft before final document.
I think we should do a spread in the meeting. I think, in my opinion, was, and I'd share with Jeff, probably like six till seven prior to, we're looking at our April meeting, and that way there's some interaction too, as opposed to them just coming here and dropping off a sheet of paper.
And I, I know John was trying to target for March, which I think would be fine if you do a workshop, but if you wanna, if we wanna do a more program, I think they'll let, doing it, kicking it back to April, give you guys more time to get notification out, rally the, rally the citizenry. Hopefully, you know, someone can reach out to the business community and let people on rations, some of those business owners know, um, and give you that extra time to tell them.
Anybody?
They were there, and we've all digested everything in here to speak.
What?
Other than the, the minor speak, I don't think I can attempt to speak and answer questions on.
I don't think it's.
This point until maybe May.
To be said though, if I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're not really answering their questions. We, this is what we have, and yes, we're here to answer what exists, these are suggestions that we should consider going forward in what we're developing here, like, like I think there should be a part line, Clark Street, you know, whatever, you know, that's, that's the opportunity for them to say as we're moving forward with this document, correct?
If I could add, I mean, there's, there's nothing here to, to just setting a time and date when this has to happen, you know, John can put a schedule forward, but if we can take as much time as we want, if you guys don't, if you guys want to have next, get the document in front, if you still wanna go through those and review them, have that discussion next month, next month you can decide.
Yeah, that's fine.
You could do it in, in May.
I think he did start bringing in some kind of timeframe, but that's.
Yeah, this does put us behind for that.
But he hasn't ever given us the timeframe, has he? I thought he's supposed to bring it to this.
I, I think, I think with, if you were looking at March meeting, the phone discussion and having John, he was saying it could be as anywhere, or this wrapped up as from October to November, depending upon if there were issues that went away to village council, if there were different questions, and you can come back and build an extra month in there. The thing is, there's no, there's no set deadline, you know, if it didn't get done until next February, that's fine, we're not, we're not meeting, missing any, you know, grant opportunities or anything for that, it's really at the pace that you guys feel comfortable with.
You know, you can put the calendar together and send it to us before this next meeting, I'll just spot some.
Yeah, we can just go forward.
Then prove that calendar and rules that, that calendar has as far as meeting, you know, timeframes.
I mean, we can just go forward with the document and revisit it next month. I do like the idea of, of giving like two months notice though.
I think that's helpful, you know.
To give, not so much to the people, people will forget two months notice, but to the businesses, gives us, you know, that'll be a workload for Lori or whoever manages that.
So what's the plan?
Well, that's just gonna be a post meeting, right?
Well, we formally invite businesses into a reach, which I kinda feel like, I mean, she does have the means to do that, she probably need to say, hey, to at least our businesses and then our post would be to the community.
If we're gonna send it, like, I'd really like to be much more careful.
Okay. And I think if we're gonna send formal invitations to the businesses, we need to work out the community too, so that it's gonna be.
Like a mailing to the community?
I'm not sure, how would, how would she reach out to the businesses?
Well, I think she has an email for all the businesses, and she had like a straight out, I feel like there's, I don't know.
I would, I would.
I'd have to ask her.
I just think the, um, outreach needs to be consistent across the board, whether it's a community member stakeholder or business stakeholder.
Well, we could put it on our bills.
I was just gonna say.
That was gonna say that.
Put it in and then wait for one month.
So then.
Couple cents extra postage.
Well, we, we, there was a place to write a note on a water bill.
Oh, is there?
Okay.
On a water bill.
Very good. That's perfect.
Okay. So then we won't set, we won't look at sending a date then until next month?
Maybe another question to ask of this, if there's any mailings coming out from the village, if there's a newsletter, if there is a, um, I don't know, the water report or something else to get it tacked it onto, when's the water report come out, isn't that in spring?
I think it is in spring. I think it is.
Maybe just ask it, because we can do it as cheaply as possible.
I'd like multiple others.
I think water bills the answer to that.
But I wouldn't, I'm kinda with Tracy, I wouldn't wanna unevenly like.
Put it on the bulletin board on channel six, we're going every day for the full two months.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
I got direct TV.
I mean, obviously, we'd have it on our website and social media too, so we'll be out there that way.
But I definitely wanna be even, I wouldn't wanna send a special invite to business and not send a special.
Correct.
Because it's kind of an imbalance of.
Right, I agree. Because you're not gonna have the participation and the score on like they, they had first time.
Right, yes.
As those were all people, um, I use the word loosely, appointed to the planning process.
Right. Okay. Okay, then we will revisit that again next month, um, and schedule that hopefully done. And that'll give us more time to review the, um, plan as well. All right?
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, so the sign ordinance, this is just an update, um, we met with, I don't wanna leave anybody out, Sean, our attorney, um, John was unable to make it, but he did do like an availability as far as filling, because he was not feeling well, Dan, um, our co-enforcement officer, Dave Cowan, our building inspector, Chris was there, and I think that's it. We discussed with them, the process going forward was enforcing the sign ordinance, and Sean was very clear as to, um, the line would just be documentation, so, um, it's not, they're not gonna start it right away, um, they're trying to get some documents together to.
Form letters, like?
Form letters, like to start the process. Um, everything's gonna go back to Sean, so if somebody, so once, what's gonna happen is Dave and Dan are gonna go out, they've been informed that they're not supposed to have any type of communication verbally, that this is just a documentation process. And we are in the same time going to, what's the word I'm looking for? Do an inventory of all the village of new haven signs at this time. So every business is going to be looked at for their sign, photographed, and put in a, you know, a pile, a book.
Holy, yeah.
Right, thank you.
Look over there.
Right, so, um, so we're gonna inventory where everybody's at, and then, um, we had discussed at some point in time here that we would send a letter to all the businesses first, allowing them to be aware that we have changed our sign ordinance, that's not going to take place, Sean felt that it wasn't necessary, it's costly, it's timely, they've already received their notice in the paper with the change of the ordinance. So we're just gonna go forward with the process, um, Dan, Dave, they'll document, photograph, turn it over to Lori, it will then, once every bit is collected as a totality, it's gonna be turned over to planning for a review, they'll just slip through to see if they're in agreement that, um, the signs are non-compliant, it'll be turned over to Sean for review, the attorney, he'll flip through and agree, notices will come from our attorney's office to those people, if there's any complaints to the office, they'll be turned over to Sean for a response.
Sounds great.
Perfect. So, um, probably about two months, mid-spring is when they're gonna go out there, early spring, mid-spring to start, to start doing this. And.
Look, that's good.
So, and then everything, and then the county is going to keep a copy of the pile as well, so that there is a pile here and a pile there, in case we lose the pile.
Basically, a PDF, a book of it.
Right, it's just gonna be a book, right?
Well, I'm glad there's a plan, thank you.
Yes, a pile of papers, so. And it went really well, Dan seemed, good, Dave seemed good with it and, and stuff, so I don't think there was any, anything more that really came out of that. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, then I'll go to Tracy for new business Clark Street property.
So I gave everybody a map and a fun fact sheet, uh, color. So at one time, um, on the map, the highlighted areas were all part of the Amherst community, and it was, uh, the village, I don't know the nitty gritty either, they, they want it back, or it was turned back, I don't know.
We bought it.
It's not, we bought it back, we want it for Texas, thank you, it was before my time. So this is owned by the village in Oak Haven, the highlighted area. So there has been discussion about what to do with the property, sell the property, build on the property, um, council glossed over it for a very quick minute, um, it was brought up, and nothing came out of it, it was brought up again last month, and it was suggested that it come to planning. So the fun fact you can see is 47, like 47 acres, there's planted lots, 139, so that's planted five estate, so.
They can't be planted because it's a.
Well, but they could use, a builder could use that plant.
Well, it's not a plant, it's a, it's a PUD.
Right, but this isn't part of that PUD anymore.
That's what I'm saying.
Correct.
Somebody's gotta start fresh.
Yes, but one piece of the puzzle for somebody could be done, because they could say, oh, you know what, I'm gonna use these X blocks that are drawn on here. So that's what I mean by this plating could be used, or that's what fits on this configuration, because it's not all buildable land, the gray area in the middle is what lands and it cannot be built on.
This whole thing has to come back to planning for a fresh start per se, they could do whatever, they could.
I'm just sharing the information with you because council asked for it to come to planning, to come up with an idea of what to do with this. So that's why this is the information I was given. So keep in mind that the back part of the property is only accessible through Amherst to build that, that north east. Um, the property was last appraised at $285,000, is currently listed for 350, there's no documented infrastructure on the property, but many people have reason to believe that there is infrastructure on the property, but it just was never.
Recorded?
Recorded, that is the proper word, so there, there's a, there's a little bit of a hole there, we're not really sure. So going backwards to Rod's discussion about the, the plating, if the infrastructure is indeed back there, that's where this original plating would come in handy for that builder, because whoever, or whomever's gonna build on that, if it's gonna be houses. So that's a very important piece, and I think until somebody goes out there and digs, or if a previous owner put the infrastructure in, comes forward to say, oh, by the way, we did do it, and here's the documentation, we just never had it recorded.
Man, has he been asked?
I don't really answer to that. I don't.
Could you drive back there and see, or walk back?
Well, I can see some sewers and such back there.
And I can look and see an electrical box.
Yeah.
Behind my house.
Right.
So there's something there. I don't know how far the electric goes, because I'm pretty close to the north end of that.
Right.
So I don't know if it's just off the road there.
Yes.
This is the north end, this is the north corner you're talking about, utilities or?
All of it.
All of it, okay.
All of it. I'm gonna be honest with you, I have reason to believe personally.
In this there, in the yellow.
Yep, it's probably about right there.
Because I do remember them discussing that they, um, would someday start and open that, because at the time then, the big push was, hey, keep building, build, 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 build.
Right.
And then everything went.
Right.
Just before that, you know, I'm talking like two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, before it burst, and it was, you know, we were tracking him in here, trying to get him to commit to continuing, put in streets, and, um, it was just, no, we've got it laid out so that we can continue on, but not that we're gonna start doing that. And then, of course, that was a great decision, because they had all sorts of empty lots that they hadn't built on.
Right. I mean, just as a resident there, and watching things that went on over the years, the amount of years I've been here, I believe there's infrastructure back there, and it was not recorded, but I can't speak, I don't know for sure. But moving forward, so you'd have to think about how much it costs to put infrastructure back there, if it's not, you know, what the cost of the infrastructure would be, where the houses would have to sell for and sell. So, there's been a lot of speculation about what to do with the property. At one time, somebody, a builder, did come forward and wanted to buy it, but because there's no recorded infrastructure, I believe, as a audience member, I believe that's why he backed out of it, because he couldn't recoup his costs. There's been, I know Mr. Dilbert wanted to make it a park at one time, there was, he came to the Parks and Parks Committee one day and talked about that, so there's a lot of different things to do with it. I mean, there are a couple council members that threw around, well, what if we gave the property to a builder, but we came up with a list of things that they had to do in order to get the property? Because there's more value to the property taxes on the, on the lots, one hundred and thirty-nine lots than there is sitting alone. So, right now, it's just a discussion, is it something that we want to do? I mean, council's asked us to do it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Generically, what is the expectation of council from the planning commission? What do, what, I guess, I don't understand why it's here, to be said, because, I mean, our role would be zoning, and, and making sure that it's zoned appropriately, and I kinda feel like anything else is probably out of, we, we can make a suggestion, but it really doesn't matter what our suggestion is, because ultimately, this isn't our thing.
Maybe do they want us to highlight it or include it in our master plan revisions?
I mean, are they just looking for more input from seven other people, or?
Well, council member asked, why don't we send this to planning? Uh, Mrs. Pride-Morse suggested, why don't we send it to planning and see what they would like to do with it? But I agree with everything that you're saying, because I don't feel it's appropriate to ask us to put a lot of time or energy into it if it's not gonna be taken seriously.
I think from, if, if I may, from a planning perspective, um, and I would direct this at Jeff, is there anything that, not necessarily comes from us, but that comes from the department working with, say, the council, that gives some sort of analysis or guide? Like, John did kind of touch on sort of like a property analysis in a sense, like, I'm not sure if I'm using the right key, but again, we've already joined it, so we've already kind of put our keys in, but I don't know if.
I, I don't know what more than we, that we would add, if you have the appraisal, you have the current listed price, that, and infrastructure cost. I'm looking at historical photos on this, it just, it doesn't look to me like it was disturbed in the way the land would have been disturbed if, um, storms were, were to be put in. I don't, you'd see the outline of the road beds, because they would normally go through a clear, that doesn't preclude that they didn't go through a pull electrical and gas. If you do see some green boxes back there, they might exist. Um, so, I mean, that, that, that is one thing I think, obviously, sweeten the pot for development, because that underground is, is an expensive cost, and that you guys identified somewhere between twenty-seven, thirty thousand a lot. It's, it's hard to say, I mean.
I guess the question speaks out there, and that was never out there. I mean, there'd be a state for every lot, for every sewer, for every street.
Generally, if, if, if the water shut up, so we generally stick, you know, there'd be a blue state in the ground, I mean.
Yeah, I don't think it's that great infrastructure to that point. I think it's infrastructure to the point that, from what they built at Amherst, and they left their lines at the end of there, so that they could connect, you know? I'm really curious to what this, this space here is. If that ever does come up.
That space.
We can somehow fit.
That gray space right here?
Is there enough room in there to fit vehicles, so that they can build out that back section without?
No.
Trashy hammers.
You cannot, that was, I mean, as a resident, that would be my concern, because the only way to get back to these lots is through the subdivision, you cannot go back this way at all.
So, it's really a tight space.
Yes, right.
All these high fences.
Right, yeah, this is all developed, completely developed. Um, I don't know. At the end of the day, the request was, do we have any suggestions or ideas, or do we wanna come up with a plan for what to do with this property?
I think it should be left alone, that's the question. I think it should be left alone, in case we in the future need a spot for a village hall. That's my opinion.
I think it should be left alone, just because, at this point, we got a lot of crap being built, but, in my opinion, it's crap. And, you know, if you have so much space to build, you're, you're only gonna get a lower value of something being built, until a point of, this land might be more of a prized piece of land after they fill up the rest of these other subdivisions that they got going with the same house, over and over again. And, um, you know, I, I'm really, you know, things keep improving at school level, you know, I think, I hope the community becomes more valuable. So, I'll tell you what, it drives me crazy, if my house is worth two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is what I bought it for, and, uh, my buddy bought a house in St. Mir, and his house is worth three twenty-five, because it's in a cold, or, I'm sorry, three fifty-five. And he doesn't have as much for his footage, he doesn't have the finished base, but he doesn't have a patio, I mean.
Ours is worth three hundred.
Your house?
Yeah, just kidding.
Hey.
I just wanna see.
I always say that I'm the guy here, but then you got somebody giving away three hundred. Please send them by.
I, I will say, I agree that.
Call them.
The village doesn't, my two cents on is, the village doesn't currently own part, any workable property in the village. And, um, we are gonna be out of this building eventually, I'm assuming. I'm assuming, that's, I don't know, we'll see, we'll see where that goes, I mean, but we don't have a, a place, but aside from that, you take that out of the equation, I, if we're ready to build there, which I don't believe we are, at any time in the next few years, I, I don't know, I feel like we should clean it up. I feel like we should leave it the same, but we should clean it up. I'm not saying call it apart, I'm just saying, let's clean it up and make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing from across the street from Pembroke, behind Amherst, you know, put some grass in there, cut it.
You're gonna have to level that whole thing, there's so many rocks and pits and there's.
I mean, it's, it's not very, you know, you're looking at a, it's just not very aesthetic there for people driving through town, though. I mean, I guess we're selling the houses without it being cleaned up, but would it be a little bit more appealable if it was?
I mean, there's no sidewalk in front of it, you know, so it doesn't continue on, you know, all that, what there was was the two little driveway section there, um, that was never created.
Yeah, that's where the cap's hiding. Yeah, in the brush, I know. So, that's my two cents, I don't think we should do anything with it, yeah.
I do think that we should probably have a rim of it that we do cut, so that at least it's not on the road.
They do, they do just that edge there.
They do now.
Yeah, and they actually, three hundred and fifty is a bunch of money.
The only thing I would say, though, is.
I'm sorry, what did you say about the money?
I said, to sell it, we're not gonna make much money on it, really, that's not.
No, I mean, that's for sale now, somebody could come along and buy it, you know, and, it's zone, it's a single-family residential right now, so that is an option for someone, it's just the cost of the investment is not there yet.
The only thing I, I guess I would be leery of is, do we lose an opportunity by not being more open to it right now, and the market's a little bit more viable, might not be so viable in five years? But then, again, we're just stuck with whoops, we'll have the exact same scenario five years from now, and we won't own it.
Correct.
Maybe an RFI.
Well, that would, that was.
Maybe an RFI to say, hey, and with very specifics, single-family, these are, this is what we want with the next amount of time, and see if there's any interest.
Well, that, that was tossed around by a couple council members, um, but we just didn't do the work at the time to, to come up with a list of what, what other requirements in order to get this piece of property to build.
Maybe this will be our next project after we finish with, um, the master plan is covered with a, in fact, what you're saying, a document to train.
The only thing, I, I mean, as much as I'd like to be a part of it, I don't think it's ours to be a part of it. That's as much as I have. Jeff? Sorry, did I wake you up down there?
No, no, I'm looking at the property.
I'm gonna ask them a question before I answer your question.
Okay.
Because I, I wanted his opinion about something really, have you ever heard of this happening in a community? That the community owns a property, they want residential housing on it, per se, and the community said, all right, everybody, line up, who, who can meet these requirements, and?
It, it is possible, I mean, you could, you could do an RFP on the property, say, you know, request for a proposal, or a request for qualifications to build to a certain spec. You generally tend to see that more in, um, traditional downtowns, in places where you're putting mixed-use development, where you're trying to bring together, want so much commercial space, so much of that. Um, it's, it is absolutely possible, it really, it really goes by the market forces. I mean, I think that's the biggest thing. I don't, at this price, the question, I guess, the community would need to ask is, are people knocking down the door to take advantage of this property now?
No, and, and the reason why is because you're buying it, you know, with the idea there's no infrastructure, so the cost to put that in.
Correct.
And then build your house.
You have a club, buildable lots already here.
With, with, with existing infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
So, you kinda gotta wait until it's built, and then it has more value that, okay, there's nothing else left, okay, now we got this piece of property.
Great.
To buy to, because.
So, based on what you said, and your experience, that people have done this, where does, who, what group of people are putting this RFP together? Excuse me, thank you.
In some cases, where it's, where it's a, in a, in a community, sometimes it's the DDA, because it's the Downtown Development Authority, who already has control over the property. In this case, it'd be the village, it could be, it could be council, it could be something that would be, uh, uh, an objective of council that's passed down to planning, where planning would do that through their consultant, um, depending upon the scale and scope, and what, how aggressive the community was, sometimes they may hire another firm, an outside firm to do that, but it most likely would be a planning, it'd be a planning that the firm. I think the first thing that would, would be in place, and that's saying that we, that the community should invest, and just do a market survey, you know, what, what are the, because I, I don't have that answer, what are developers looking for, what is the threshold? I mean, we know right now, just looking across Michigan right now, is everyone saying, hey, we need more starter homes. We need more affordable homes for that first tier, and they talk about that, that middle tier of housing, but we're seeing a development community that says, I can't bring that to market and make any coin on it. So, the question that I think, there's a couple of questions here, it is, it is a property, it's, it's next to, is our property, it is close to rail, you do have the train tracks, not saying that that's anywhere, because.
Question.
We all, I think, we all live near this train track, Manchester, you have less than half mile from it.
Right.
But that is another factor, that's gonna look at, look at what the use is. It's hard to say, it, it, you know, because, because you, you could put an offer out there, but it has to also be the business model and the profit mode and the return on investments of that, of that developer.
Right.
That's, I don't know that, that I can answer that question.
I mean, you need to make a quiet homes in this community, we got, you know, the ass, the mom starter home.
With all due respect, I, I, I agree with you, but I don't know that a home is gonna fall that close to a railroad track.
Is that going to be, I guess, is that a location, that someone's gonna do that next step up home, I don't know that it would be.
Well, you guys live the closest to it to the people here, right?
I live.
How, uh.
It takes my house.
From our backyard.
You know, we feel it every time it goes by.
You feel the train?
Oh, you can feel the train, if you're, if you're still, yeah, you feel the train.
Is it sleeping?
We don't even hear it anymore.
No. We're on clay, so.
Well, that's what I mean.
I mean, I notice it the most when I'm asleep, like, not asleep, but lying down, you know, you feel it.
There are some trains that come through that are heavier than others that I can feel, but for the most part, I don't realize it's there anymore.
Yeah, just sort of there. But I think, like, my, where I am, the track, versus where these, these homes would be, like, these homes right here, like, that's just, whoo, like, that's literally their backyard.
Well, I mean, but it's, it's clear land, as far as the sound coming down, well, especially to you, it's clear, you know, there's nothing, there's no barriers to sound, if they put all this in there, she probably wouldn't even know there was a train, if it was there, because there was a whole lot more.
Right.
Sound barrier to what.
And I'm in the John Rooney, and in the, in the summertime, when the windows are open, I hear it loud and clear, especially at night, so I can't even imagine being right on top of it.
I don't hear the train, like, I hear the dang, beating of the gates, the gate I hear.
Yeah, well, that's because the train stops and the gates don't.
So, I, I do, just to get back, I do have one question.
Sure.
Have we determined if a PUD exists, and that is valid for Amherst?
Can't be, it's so out of date, it's fifteen years old.
A PUD doesn't expire, correct?
Or PUD.
They do now.
Oh, they do now?
After five years, yeah, you have five years to do it. And I believe, I believe that was, that was in play at that time, too. So, yes, the, the, the PUD would be expired by this time.
Yes.
But if the PUD, if, if this plot plan was sent in and approved, it could be utilized, it could be resent through and go through the whole process again, that could potentially save somebody time, you know? In fact, this is the ultimate configuration.
But they could configure it any way they want it also, if somebody wanted it.
I, I think within reason, but if you look, if you look at least at the northwest corner, I mean, you do have some stubs, streets out there that are kinda like gonna be the logical connections, if you were to develop that out. One thing that might be, um, just something to keep in mind, is if you're looking at this parcel, um, it doesn't have to go as a whole piece. There might be, you know, if, if, just looking at it, to me, it would make sense, long-term, to complete the northwest corner and try to fill up that as residential, because I don't know what else you would do with that. And if it's already developable, you know, if it's, if it's been created, if it, if it's gonna support that development, that might, that might, you may wanna look at maybe personally that off. And then, for future uses, as you, somebody had indicated, if there's a need, hold on to that, I mean, if you have, I don't know what other public land that the community does have, but if you are looking ultimately for municipal building, or potentially for a site for some other, other purpose, you know, that would be down in the future, but, and I also can't speak for the community financially, but I mean, it's, it's, you own it right now, you're generating no taxes on it, but at the same time, is that an advantage to hold on to it? Till a better, better, higher use comes along, or something we have, proceed now.
Right.
It can always be, it can always be addressed, you know, if you were.
The one thing I don't wanna see happen is, is we do sell it, and then we lose, you know, in the long haul, like, it doesn't get developed, and it just sort of sits, and then somewhere in the process, we lose control of what gets put on that. I mean, that's, you know, on the tracks.
I mean, right now, it's on, I believe it's on single-family SF one.
It is.
So, that's been a challenge, so anybody who purchased that can do single-family one, as long as they can. as long as they come in and meet the requirements of the site in that process. Potentially, a discussion should happen with Public Works in terms of talking about, you know, general capacity of the entire water and sewer system. You know, once the, if the community's built out of all the existing lots you have, where does that place you? What would this load put on it? Because you would be adding additional homes. I know that, and we talked about the master plan in the past, and I talked to Marcus, he said, we have capacity, but we never really talked details and numbers or how much more capacity. How many units can you really bring out to the system? Or how much can you bring out of the system if you do end up with someone maybe industrial coming and that's a higher user? Do you have, you know, we should really kind of know as a group, part of the master plan process, what those capacities are, and help factor this into. And my assumption is that there's definitely, there's probably carrying capacity on 27 Mile Road to handle the sewer because of the development that's gone in. I'm certain that Amherst probably would assume that increased capacity there. And that the fact that whatever phase this one was, was approved at one point in time, I think we could assume that there's enough capacity to take that out. But it's something that should be looked at as well.
When we did the water project, all the lots that were, you know, already planned, Pembroke, Amherst, Decorah, the water project was to handle those. But I, we did never do the sewer project, so I don't know if the sewer project could handle the additional lots. But the water was planned as part of, well, then again, it was done by, you know, Fozzo, so who knows? But it was, you know, that question was asked, that what we were doing wasn't going to have to be redone in order to, you know, take on these new lots.
Because that's definitely a cost that the community wants to take a look at. You know, if you do develop that, is there going to be additional infrastructure? Some of those costs are not necessarily directly that you can pass on to the developer, those capacity issues. If you let them come out and find out that you're short, you don't need to sewer sanitary improvements on 27. You don't have to.
So 27, they did the sewers when they built this.
Did they?
There were sewers to this property.
There was not?
There was a firm.
Oh, yeah, there was a firm.
My understanding on the sewers is that we have greater capacity than what we would ever need. That's my understanding, is that we would actually go over accessibilities.
When you guys eventually came out in the interceptor.
Yeah, we had to replace all of them because we weren't equipped for the pressure from Detroit.
Yeah.
So Tracy, what would you like, like, as?
I, I, if everybody wants to participate in doing it, I will participate. But I will also say that I don't want to see everybody put a lot of sweat into this when it's kind of being speculative based on council approving it. Because I just don't think it's fair to waste everyone's time.
Right.
So...
I think if you take it out and you take a project to the council, and they don't warrant, they're probably going to go, well, thank you, God bless you.
You know what? I'd agree with you 100%. If somebody came and said, hey, look at the beginning of this plan, and this is great, I would be very appreciative and supportive if it was reasonable. Absolutely, I agree with that 100%. But I can't speak for everyone. Let me ask this then.
I think our workload is sufficient that if somebody helps them, they're not...
Let me ask of this then, and then feedback, if you agree or disagree, that we kick it back to council and ask for a more formal request of their expectations, of what they expect of us. I mean, because right now, like, I just, we could sit around and talk about this every week, but we don't know what they want. So I'd like to know what they want. Like, what do they want us to do with it? Do they want us, do they want planning and not us? Do they want just more communication with that? May I jump to the audience for a second? Sure. Mira, just, just because he was there. Ms. Pridey Moore said, let's kick it to planning and see what they can come up with.
That's, I believe that was her thing.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
I feel like we could bat it around the table every month. And yes, you guys could, too. But I think for us, we should probably have more direction as to what are, they, council wants us to do with it, besides talk about it every month. Like, do they want a formal recommendation? Do they want an analysis, you know, a more formal analysis of what the property needs, holds, future, whatever? Yes, anybody else have thoughts on that?
Just as, just as, as another angle, potentially telling council that this could be a property that we could put in as part of the master plan, and this would be something that you could, one of the things you could directly engage the community in.
Yeah.
Here, and potentially maybe even take that larger, because I don't know what other publicly held, and there's other significant parcels, we could just put them all together and say, what do you, what should the village be doing in the future? And maybe even say, should we be looking to sell it, maximize the profits? Should we be looking to hold it, preserve it? Maybe get some feedback, at least you did the input from the constituents down there. Just to give. I mean, that's, that's a concrete action that this work could take and solicit that input.
So...
Another thing, it doesn't come into talk to the developer often, but it's in Lucy's backyard. It's got all the lots over there weathered that are still available. And while they're building carpet rooms over there. That may be even something that should be part of our master plan, try and... So hightly that area as well.
If this comes back to planning again for more, I would like to know, very, as concrete as it can be, based on projected growth and everything, when our current empty lots are anticipated to be full? When are, when will this land be required because we have filled everything else?
It's my understanding that Lombardo is pretty much through the beginning part of Decorah.
Right.
That there's permits pulled?
The one side of the main street on the one side is basically done, or, you know, it will be done, you know, by some, by the stuff. But then there's a whole nother section on the other side of the main that they haven't even opened up for any kind of sale or... And of course, if it's toward north, and you can't build in there either at this point, there's no coordinates to build there.
Right. Probably till they're done with the...
Yeah, they're doing it section by section by section. Everybody's very thankful for, but the sidewalks are getting complete. School perspective, you don't have one house in the middle of nowhere, somebody up there.
Right, you're going to hate the bus.
All the sidewalks are getting done.
But that's only just information that I've been given.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know, like, based on current growth, I mean, obviously, you don't know what's going to happen down the road. But based on current growth, when we are anticipated to be full?
I really think part of the problem that doesn't make it move even quicker is the fact that you have four houses to choose from for all the empty lots that are available. Like, when I bought my house in Decorah Park, Rome, between Amherst, or between American Heartland and Lombardo, there was over 20-something homes, I think it was 23 or 24 different homes to choose from. You go with it. And again, Amherst, most of them, what, 13 different to pick from in there?
I will say, though, they're selling faster than they can build them. We're the largest, we're the fastest-building community in this area. I mean, the price point, people are still buying them. But it's not helping us, we're already here, but it's the same price point.
Well, it doesn't help with people that out from our house.
Right.
They can't stay here, they have to go.
Right.
Because they're not building them a house that's bigger than what they have to stay in the community. And that's part of the reason people leave. I mean, I can make you a list of people that wanted a bigger home, and that's why they left. Not that they didn't like it.
Unfortunately, till the market calls for it, that's not going to happen.
Well, I don't know if the market doesn't call for it. It's just what he's building is quick and easy to build. I mean, they've got the same basement with four different toppers on it. And, you know, they sit right there in Decorah Park, ready to drive a rocket, put it in the ground. And, you know, it's, I forget what he called, that kind of building he does, the efficiency build. I mean, there's a big write-up in the paper years ago about Lombardo, his efficiency house building, maximizing profits. To build a house, you know, he makes good money off what he's building it, because there's very little option to it.
Has Lombardo ever expressed interest in this property?
Not that I, it was his property.
Not that I know of. Yeah, he let go.
And he had no, we did, when we were on council, we tried to get him to buy it back. And then he took that work back on the free, and that's all he was interested in.
Yeah.
But let's remember, that's not really Lombardo.
And then the other part of Decorah. I, like Jeff said, I mean, what is the demand for the property anyways? I mean, if there's really no demand, then...
So you want to know what they aren't planning to do exactly? You want to know, based on the current growth, when we need more lots?
Right.
Those are two questions?
I think so.
Okay. Any other questions? I just think we're too quick to give away. And do, I don't think the idea was just to be giving things away. I think the idea, that idea came from the fact, again, the property is sitting vacant, and no one can afford to purchase it and build a house and make money. Because obviously, if somebody's building houses and the business is making money, they're not going to do it properly. So it was an alternative method in order to get some tax revenue. I think it, nobody wants to give anything away, but...
I'd be willing to give it away if it was something that would create a large, you know, create homes that were larger, or create competition to build bigger and better homes here in the village so that we have more in the territory around it.
The builder that we're looking at would be the competition to the current builders.
Yes.
Yeah, it wasn't Lombardo looking to re-acquire and build again, it was a different builder. Create new homes.
Yeah, and there's actually a couple builders out there that would be interested in participating in, okay, what do you want, let me see if I can do that. And, I mean, there are people out there that would do it. But you just said something important that's going to put me back to Jeff, and that is, like Rob's expressing, he wants these larger coin homes, but our current ordinances don't support that, am I correct?
I'd have to look and see if this, I don't know that, I guess the question is how large you're talking.
That we could say to someone, you have to build X amount of square feet.
We have a minimum.
We have a minimum.
And it's...
But that minimum's...
It's a variable minimum, 750? Yeah, I think, I don't know.
In some, yeah. At least, I know it scales up through the different, I think it scales through the single-family one and two. I think there's some differences.
Actually, I have...
I don't have it in front.
But we can put, we can put those expectations, though, on an RFP.
If it goes to an RFP, and if you were to do it as a PUD.
Right.
But, but just as it's currently sold, someone could come in and put in, build to the minimum.
768 square feet, and that, single-family one is 900.
900, okay.
So we could, if there is an RFP, override the ordinance per se, okay?
Well, because it's a PUD, you can put whatever minimums there.
In the lot's 60-foot wide.
Change the lot size.
Unless it's detached condos.
Can we change the lot size? Uh, let's see, 60 and 70 is the width.
So I would go with the 70, if you're putting a big...
I mean, if you're going to go to bigger houses, though, then the plot plan is pretty much...
I think 80, if you're going to put larger houses on it.
Well, not really, because you could just double up these lots. Because aren't these lots, these lots aren't even 50, are they?
They're probably 50 because they were detached condos. Yeah, but I thought it was not for detached condos.
What's your lot? What are your, if you're on a straightaway?
The front is 50.
Is it 50?
I think it's 45, I'll have a think of it.
I thought it was 45, but...
Yeah.
But that was part of the deal.
Right.
When it was created, it was, you know, to crush more houses and to, you know...
To make them detached condos.
Which is a great idea, otherwise, all of us wouldn't be here, Rob.
I got 50.
It was, I have to... It was the start of it all.
For the sake of conversation, though, I ask you, if you were to buy, say, $300,000 to $350,000 home, would you buy one practically, would that be where you would drop $300,000 to $350,000? And I think that's the question, like, okay, we ask people to build a $300,000 home here, but you're stuck between the railroad tracks and $180,000 homes. Is that really where you're going to say, I'm going to drop my $300,000?
Well, I mean, you could say the same thing about houses in Clinton Township. They put, you know, a million-dollar house here, and all the way around them is $200,000 houses. But that's, there was a want to live there, and I think there is wants to live here because of things that have happened here. People brought their kids, and they like the schools, and they're, you know, part of the community. And I think, yes, they might not be fresh people from somewhere else, but I think people within the community that want to move on up to something bigger, that is not going to be their deterrent, is, you know, Amherst and a railroad track. I think that they would want it. I don't necessarily know if someone driving by is going to go, oh, yeah, let's put them there.
Yeah, you're looking to appeal to the people already here that want to stay.
I'm looking to keep the people that we get that, because when I think of all the people that have been here, they're active, and, you know, they were, they're good, good community people that have left to get something bigger, someone, because it's not here to get. It really stinks.
How many people are, how many, this is like, I'm just asking you to do this. How many of those people are you still attached to?
A good portion of them.
Can you ask them?
If they would have, if they would have bought a...
Yeah, if they had an opportunity for $300,000, because I would just really be curious to know, just, I mean, it doesn't...
Oh, I brought it up.
You know, would you stay if this here exactly was your $300,000?
Well, I never thought of it on this property. I thought more, you know, in Decorah North and Pembroke being those.
But that's what I'm getting at, like, is this, I'm not saying there's not other places, if they weren't already developed in our community, where it might work. I'm just wondering if this is the place, like, are we putting our dreams a bit too high?
But that's a good question.
On a, like, ask them, I'd be, I'd just be curious to know if they would stay if that was an option right there.
That's a good idea.
So I was... That's it. Anybody?
You do know that that buzzer's going out the door, right?
So I'm talking, that way I don't...
So no other questions? For the group, okay, now you know where I'm at.
But I think, like, like...
It's actually our village hall.
Well, it's also...
We've got a whole lot of property for a village hall.
Uh, it is.
It's a whole lot of property for a village hall. I mean, we've got too much here now.
It's also, was brought to my attention that the company that owns all of Lombardo's property also owns some property on Gresham, some commercial property in that. I wonder if they would swap that property for this property, making that more viable place for a village hall in the future.
Oh, for God's sakes, more Lombardo here?
No, then say if we swapped, wouldn't it be neat if we could just swap the two pieces of property, and then we could build a village hall on Gresham?
They'd have to be crazy. I've heard that, I don't think it would.
I know, but...
I think building a village hall on Gresham is a really...
Right, and that was speculating that the underground, they know the underground is there.
Oh, no.
I don't think anybody would swap their Gresham.
Can you find that out from the county?
If, yeah, because the permits would have been pulled for a storm if it went in there, and the soil erosion permits would have all had been pulled, Public Works Office would have.
They would have had to have done that, though, they would have had to go to the county.
Right.
So when clearly it was looking to buy it, they did their due diligence, and the county had no record of anything.
I say it's not there, and...
It'd be easy enough to just walk the property, because if there's catch drains, there's catch drains or anything, that'll all be sticking up. But just looking at the aerial photo, it does not look like it was ever disturbed in the way they could see it, the infrastructure was put in. You generally would see almost the outline of the roads, which I don't really see.
I think the only thing it has is like the, the tap of the road. I think that's the only thing that was ever set up as far as that type of infrastructure. That's what I recall.
I know, and they liked it, it's back there, big green one.
And they told us that it was ready for them to expand when they were ready to expand, but that they had no plans to expand it. I don't think they put a dime into it.
If he put all the money for infrastructure, I don't think he'd have let it go. If he put all the money for infrastructure, I don't think he'd have let it go without that.
The good point.
That's true.
And I agree with that.
Yeah.
He would have, he would have put the road in and finished it.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Any anything?
No.
Okay. Do you have anything, Jeff?
No, other than I handed out what I believe is the updated planning report that John gave last month. There were some items that were missing, so he asked me to distribute that to you guys.
We have it, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I've got a copy here for you, Rob, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments, Mariam?